All this regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order. If you don't mind, I actually do have some flags back here. I hope you all will join me. I feel it appropriate to say the pledge of allegiance tonight, if you don't mind. So there you go. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of America.
Justice, peace, and one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, I hope I hope nobody else gets to see that.
That's all right.
That was delay.
Well, yeah, it's okay. I feel better having done it. So thank you all. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I will just note that if we are not finished by about six thirty five ish or so, I will be turning the meeting over to Deputy Mayor Donnelly. Have a parade to attend tonight. So I hope you all don't mind that, but we might be able to get through this agenda. If I shush up and announce that Dexter is here as our visitor tonight, and he will be joining us a little bit later in the agenda. And so let's move on to the issue of the approval of the minutes. Both sets I'm looking for a motion for.
I'll make the motion to approve the minute.
Lowell and Mark. Great. Thank you. Any additions, corrections, deletions in the March tenth set?
Yeah, I've got some.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Yeah. Second page. Northland's discussion. Seventh line down says northern tier of Vermont. I wonder if that should be Virgens.
Yes, it should be Virgens.
Okay. Next page. Memorial bench for Dr. Bicknell. It should see LC Jazz should be capital L, capital C.
Right.
And then below that in the manager's report next to the last line, the season is coming to a close. That will be tapering off, not tampering off.
Thank you.
That's it.
Deputy Mayor.
That was the same ones I had.
Randomly throughout March tenth, my name is K O E N I G and K E O N I G. So we should stick with one.
Right.
Okay. We saw you had multiple personalities.
That's fine. You can pick either one. It doesn't matter to me. Just, you know, consistency is good.
Let's be consistent. All right. Any other corrections on that set? Moving on to March twenty fifth. Any additions, corrections? I just had one, and that is that the references made to Alderman Donnelly should read Deputy Mayor Donnelly. I think there are two in the in that set. All right. Anything else? All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Did anyone have any questions on the warrants that were circulated to us?
No.
Great. This is the section of our agenda for citizen comments. Do we have anyone calling in with any? Manager Hoffman? All right.
I don't see anybody.
Okay, we'll move into business then. First item on the agenda is to approve a long term control plan. Manager Hoffman, you want to start this out?
Yes, so I gave you guys a memo with the long term by myself that kind of explains the situation with a long term control plan for the city that was drafted by our contracted engineer Dexter, who's with us today to answer any questions for you guys. You know, basically, the state has told us to correct the problem, the overflow situation. We hire Dexter with the help of state funds to correct the situation, to help us plan a correction for the situation. But the state wants a long term control plan on the books that we are accountable to. And they've been nice enough to allow us some, like six months, we're six months overdue at this point. So technically we could have a fine. We should have been fined. So yeah, with I'll turn it over to Dexter and I'll share my screen Dexter.
All right. Just explain, I guess, and you've probably all seen the three page letter, but does on page one, we do mention some of the milestones that the city's made in recent months, including the submission of sixty and ninety percent draft preliminary engineering reports that we will commonly refer to P E R, and probably mention it again. But those were submitted in October and January. And at this point, the P E R is identifying two, one project of eighteen million dollars, which would be broken into being upgrading the wastewater treatment facility. The second part, upgrading the collection system, the sewers within the city. The long term control plan related entirely to the elimination or control of the overflows that the city has to Otter Creek. So as I continue forward, I'll talk less about the wastewater treatment facility and more, or probably entirely about the collection system, the sewers. So we, part of our study that we completed mostly in twenty nineteen was to do what's called an infiltration and inflow study. And what that involved was continuous monitoring of flows at different locations within the collection system for a period of six weeks. And the outcome of that study was that the the problem with the sewer system is inflow. And what inflow is, it's surface water that enters the sewer system or run rain, rain runoff. So that water is not supposed to go into the sewer system. But it is the cause of overflow. The quantity of water that enters the sewer system is excessive. It's a very large quantity of water. In our report, we looked at alternatives to deal with that excess water with the purpose of eliminating the overflow. We identified some options of making improvements to the pump station that included storage on site. Those options were going to cost in excess of five million dollars and would not provide full relief, wouldn't fully eliminate the SSOs. It would eliminate overflows for a five year storm. But if you had an event that was more extreme than a five year storm, you'd still have overflows. And that would put you into a non compliance situation with D E C. And you could be subject to fines in those events. So I did, we just didn't really think that that was a good way to go to spend that much money and still have an overflow. So what we recommend doing is making fixes to the collection system to prevent storm water from entering it. That to do that, we need to follow sort of a hunt and peck process of elimination to identify the different sources of inflow. We conduct what's called a sanitary sewer system evaluation survey, S S E S. And that goes through multiple steps to look at the sources of inflow. The first step we have identified, the funding's been approved for that by the state just recently. And that work will be completed during the dry part of this year. And that's called smoke testing. We're going to blow smoke into sewer lines throughout the whole older portion of the city sewer system, everything on the north side of Otter Creek and try to identify the sources of inflow that are causing the problem. It's, we don't really know what the outcome of that will be as far as how much of the inflow will capture. Obviously, we hope to capture all of it. But as I mentioned, this is a hunt and peck process, and this is sort of like the first tier, first level of investigation that we take to to look at inflow. Though I'd mentioned that we had an eighteen million dollar project. On page two of the letter, we provide the project cost summary that breaks the project into two components. W W T F is the wastewater treatment facility, and then the other portion we've called storm water. You'll see that as we go down, we have some allowances for grant money. Let's see, the first row is the construction cost. And we have contingency. Then we add in engineering and other costs such as administration and legal. And then we've estimated total project costs there.
Excuse me Dexter, that five million dollars for the storm water?
Yep.
So does that include all of the potential alternative testing techniques you plan on doing? What's that based on? It's a nice round number.
That is a round number, and it is, it's sort of an arbitrary number, although it's it's based in reality two ways. One is that we feel that if you invest five million dollars in your sewer system, you will successfully eliminate overflows. Whereas the other alternatives that had an equal approximately equal investment, you'd still have overflows.
Okay.
So and it's further based, it would be roughly twenty five thousand feet, almost five miles of sewer or storm water at two hundred dollars a foot. So it's a budget cost for twenty five thousand feet of sewer replacement or new storm water.
Okay.
Probably the project will be some combination thereof.
Yep.
We've got an exciting funding opportunity, which is on this row. It's called U S A C E Section five forty two Grant. Actually, that's the Corps of Engineers has a program that they call Section five four two. We'll be applying. Well, the city will be applying for that program within the next week or two. And if accepted, the Corps of Engineers will actually fund up to sixty five percent of the cost of that project. We only carried thirty five percent for this summary, but all these allowances for grants and funding are up in the air. Nothing is, I don't think anything has been confirmed yet. And each program has its own different set of requirements as to what it will take to get the funding. But we have had some initial discussions with the Corps of Engineers. They feel the project fits their program. If it does, they take that whole project over to provide sixty five percent of the funds to do it and look for a local match of thirty five percent, which it can be any sort of non federal match. So if we were successful in getting a thirty five percent grant from the state as indicated there, that's their maximum amount. That'd be sixty five plus thirty five, which is a hundred percent funding. We obviously haven't. I think we we looked at a total of ninety percent in this cost summary. So.
How long would it take to get confirmation on some of these funding sources?
Well, they're all different and they have different requirements. USDA. We're in the midst of applying for USDA now. The deadline is Friday. We don't expect that we will be in a position for them to make grant promises to us this year. They they require a bond vote, and at this point, the bond vote is going to occur on Election Day in November. So until we have that bond vote, we won't get a funding commitment from them. So we're going to be in the program ineligible. But until we meet that milestone of a bond vote, we won't get grant commitments from them.
How do you know what the bond vote amount's going to be if you're still in flux?
Well, they require that you bond for the full amount of the project. So you'd have to bond for the eighteen million with the intent to only fund locally. Four million is Daniel's number.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's weird. So it's weird. You have to bond vote for the full amount, and then you put in a stipulation, you won't go forward unless you get this much funding from these other sources.
Okay, okay, great. Yep.
That's how we've been putting it forward. So I guess you go to the next page, Daniel. You know, there's many, many steps to this S S E S work. In this, this format here is one that the state requires as part of the long term control plan. It's it's the it's a portion of their, they call it an affordability analysis. But anyway, it's a listing of the tax tasks that you will complete year to year. And what we've done is we've submitted this to the state as a guidance document. You know, this is what we're thinking of committing to for the next five years. They've indicated general acceptance of this, and I think it's pretty good. The only thing that's questionable is in is construction. I really don't think you'll be able to proceed with with construction of any improvements without a bond vote. So if the bond vote is unsuccessful in November, we wouldn't recommend that you commit to anything in this table that is says construct. So that'd be item four in twenty twenty two would be constructing the phase one improvements. And then there's, in the next three years, there's four phases of S S E S improvements. We feel that with the bond vote, you can make a commitment to those those dates. So this is what we're proposing is that we submit this long term control plan now as a draft that we hold it as a draft until you have the bond vote. And then at that time, submit it formally. I think the states agreed to that approach. And so that's, that's where we're at. Any more I need to mention? Daniel?
Yeah, I think I think you pretty much covered it. I think you pretty much covered it. I mean, the bond vote is, I just want to reiterate, it's all contingent on what level of funding we get, if any. So I mean, we may have to circle back to the table. If these funding sources fall, if this if this plan doesn't happen here, we're going to have to come back to the table. But this plan, yeah.
Thing that's true is if the dream funding with the Corps of Engineers comes through and we get that sixty five percent cost covered for the storm water piece, that whole project goes away and the schedule moves into their hands. It's no longer in your hands. So dates would have to change with that, but we should know in July, I think. Yeah, for the next federal fiscal year where we're going to be.
And we we and we applied for this. And we're about to apply for this. And we're about to apply for all these other things. So we applied so far for just Vermont Clean Water State Revolving Fund. But the others will be done this this month and next month.
Daniel, Bill Benton, what's your current budget number at eight hundred thousand across the board there? What does that represent?
That's where that's where our revenues are at right now.
Okay.
That's my projected. So this number, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. This number Dexter had our old budget. But you know, since we've raised the rates, so you could see the cost per user. It was, in Dexter's analysis at first, it was higher because.
Is that Lynn?
No, that was.
No.
So anyway, yeah, this is what I'm projecting around eight hundred thousand for revenues for the for wastewater fund. This this number prior to the increase was around seven hundred. So that makes a big difference on how much you have to increase the rates on everybody. If if you have to, if you know, if this goes through, this is saying that we'll fund four million on our own. But that's that's it is sustained. I mean, that's the max, the absolute max in my mind.
Any other questions?
Will this, the smoke testing be able to determine where residences have hooked their sump pumps up to the system? Are people's houses going to be smoked and we can say, hey, that's not supposed to happen?
So it should not, it's possible, it should not identify sump pumps. What it does is it identifies things that are, each house should have a trap. And all the sanitary plumbing in the house, including a sump pump, would be on the house side of the trap. What we will identify is any connections on the other side of the trap, which is more likely to be a roof leader. If there's a roof drain or a storm drain or a broken pipe. Those are those are the generally the things that the the smoke testing will identify.
Like manhole covers that are that are not tight and so on?
What, well, we've, we block off the manholes. We will do man manhole inspections for every manhole and identify that visually. So that the manhole inspections are done visually, but it's more looking for illicit connections or connections to, yeah, common extraneous sources of water between the manholes. So roof drains are a big one, catch basins, broken pipes, those, that's the key stuff.
We've also put in for a camera as well. That that should be a beneficial tool.
And a flow meter. So a part of the investigation this summer is smoke testing, cameraing, which is a really nice camera that we should have had to be in one, I think. And a flow meter at McDonough that measures, we have a flow meter at McDonough that measures the overflows, how much is overflowing, which is nice for the state, you know. But we're going to install a flow meter to see how much is actually getting to the treatment plant. And so we could see if there's any anything going on under the Otter Creek.
Interesting. That makes sense.
So those three things are in this plan. And again, you know, that after we do those three things, we might find the aha moment and we may have to come back to the table just because of that. So, you know, this is, yeah.
And I always say that aha moment could be we found one thing that we can fix for ten thousand dollars and the overflows go away.
But I just want to reiterate that the state is requiring the city of Virgens to submit a long term control plan that is now six months overdue. So this is, this is something that we've been ordered to submit to them.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this long term care plan in its draft form for presentation to the state.
Now, just one more thing, Mr. Mayor. We're going to change, there's a couple points that the state made that we're going to incorporate in here. They're not really, it's more just semantics, like up here, they want, oh, my thing's getting all wonky. They want to know, like, the next steps in identifying is to complete sewer systems evaluation survey. So they want us to list what what those are, like the the smoke testing and the meters. So we're going to do stuff like that where we're going to expand on some of these sentences here. But the the overall, the overall substance is going to remain the same. So we may just make some fine tuning because we just got our review back, which the state was nice enough to do for us to comment on.
I think it looks great and it's long overdue. Good job, Daniel.
Thank you. Well, good job Dexter. Thank you, Dexter.
Thank you Dexter.
All right, let's go back to that motion.
I'll make the motion. This is all.
Lowell's made the motion.
I can second it.
And Mark has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a long term control plan.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you Dexter.
Thank you Dexter.
I'm going to quietly leave the meeting.
Great.
Goodbye in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're going to miss all the exciting parts.
I know, it's probably just getting good, right?
Exactly. Alrighty, item B under business, reiterate the results of the phone email poll for Addison Police Services contracts.
All right. I'm just pulling it up real quick. So I held a phone poll and slash email poll. And I just want to reiterate those on the the results of that on the record. So on March twenty third, twenty twenty, which was in the midst of the pandemic. Now, I had a contract for law enforcement services that was signed by the Addison, Town of Addison Board to be brought before our board for police services to Addison. I submitted it to you guys via email and I held a phone poll on slash email poll on March twenty third, twenty twenty. And Alderman Koenig, Alderman Benton, Alderman Bertram, Elder Woman Brooks, or Koenig Benton and Bull, they responded via email. Elder Woman Brooks, Alderman Austin responded via phone. And I think Deputy Mayor Donnelly I talked to on the phone that day and she and and the, it was a unanimous yes vote. So I just wanted to reiterate that on the record.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to item C, adoption of a local emergency management plan.
So this is a requirement by the state for for funding. And the emergency management planner at the Addison County Regional Planning Commission put this together. I think it's pretty similar to years prior. So basically, this gives us funding for having emergency management plan in place, which I think probably we should probably get something a little more robust in place now that we're dealing with all of this going on. But this is basically just a formality to, you know, say that we have a plan to get funding. And the mayor made a comment that he wanted his phone number needed to be changed, which I will do that.
Now, Daniel, you've got you're under trial by fire now, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to work on this emergency management plan that you guys are, we're going to, I'm going to revisit that one. Don't worry. Yeah.
Great. Excellent. So we need a motion to adopt this local emergency management plan.
I can, it's Mark.
Mark seconded. Any further discussion?
Should John Graham's added to vulnerable populations?
What'd you say?
Should John Graham's shelter be added to Section five vulnerable populations?
I can do that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I can, I'll do that. It doesn't hurt.
There's the the council chair is the mayor, and then you have two blanks for city council alternates. Do those need to be filled in? And you just were waiting for someone to step up or they don't really matter?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. But if someone, if someone wants to, I mean, that's fine. But I'll have the John Graham Shelter for sure.
And let's go ahead and add the deputy mayor too, please.
Okay.
If you don't mind Lynn. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. So now we're moving on to the section of discussion of the council goals. One thing I would like to say is I think that in light of, why do I keep doing this? Oh, thank you, Daniel. I think in in light of where we currently are. I think in, in light of where we currently are, we may see these goals change and perhaps morph a little bit over the course of the next year. So I think the, the real, uh, the real discussion here is, are we still in agreement with these, these core goals that we established last year? Do they sort of cover our direction? And is it the direction that we want to be going? I think the specific goals certainly can, can be added to. And, uh, you know, I think we have some deliverables that we can see pretty quickly. But, um, I, I'm not so sure how much time we need to be discussing goals right now when we have perhaps bigger things coming down. So I'm opening up the floor.
I think I agree that we need to, um, get through this current crisis we're in and then relook at what we might have been missing during this COVID-19. That we might need, uh, to readdress in some of our goals. But I think basically they're good, what we've done.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think one thing we could probably add there in light of the COVID thing is having, is revamping, uh, regional emergency response, you know? And really establishing that regional, regional emergency response. And now, you know, it's after the fact, but, um, uh, there's a lot of things that we could possibly add there. I mean, I'm gonna, obviously the stuff that's in progress is going to remain and then complete, you know, and we'll try to strive towards those things.
But the status can be changed, you know, on a quarterly basis or semi-annual basis, depending on, you know, what we're doing with, you know, the rec department or whatever. So I think that that's important just to keep it up to date.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because Kim Buckley is working towards a lot of things, even in light of what's going on. She's making great strides towards projects. So some of these things will be accomplished even considering, and I would like this to just be tied to the budget. So it's automatically revisited and it's part of a publication. So I think that's the way to go going forward also.
I think that's a very good suggestion. I think that, I, I think it's really important for us to keep these in front of us and to be sure that we all agree in the direction that we're taking. I, I think we came up with a great list and that list will continue to grow. It will also, uh, have many more completeds on it. And the city manager does bring up a really important issue. And, uh, it's probably even bigger than a council goal. And that is to really develop our relationship with our regional neighbors. The, uh, the response team that, uh, city manager Hoffman has been leading has been pretty incredible. And the relationships that we have developed, I, I think are really amazing. So that, that becomes, I think, much more important for us as we look at what might be, what might be coming down the road next. What we found, what we found was, uh, if we wanted a regional response, we were going to have to do it. So fortunately, manager Hoffman had the initiative to make it happen.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I think you're right about that. In the future, as we look towards sustaining our cash flows and bringing back our economy, I mean, we're, that, that's not something we'll be able to do alone either. I mean, we're going to have to work with Ferrisburg Pantin and the rest. So, yeah, it's something we should, we should try to, yeah, build that relationship with the surrounding communities. I think that'd be a good add-on for this.
Mayor Fritz, you don't want to keep Virgens great?
No, we can keep Addison, we can keep Addison County great.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
For a general long-term thought on the, the goals, as, is this a, a decent number of goals to have? And so as we complete one and it goes off the list, we want to then add a new one? Or are we just going to try and whittle this down to nothing and then start again?
No, I, I think, I think you have a good point. You know, I, I like that there's, that you guys established these larger categories. So I think as you, like this one, environmental stewardship, I mean, maybe we could add something to list and, and have at least two for each category. I like the idea of having these broad categories here. I think this is pretty sufficient for goals, um, to keep it, keep it something like this, yeah.
And I would prefer to see goals completed rather than roll off the list. I think it's important to remind ourselves of what we've actually accomplished.
Right.
But, go ahead.
No, well, I'm just saying, if, if you're going to add something to the list, it ought to be important enough to want to progress and to come to completion. So it kind of makes us want to think about, you know, putting the highest and best goals up there and trying to get them off the list as completed.
Agreed.
And that's the beauty of putting it in the budget, because it's, you put it in the budget, it's going to be part of the budget, which I'm going to public, I'm going to put, I'm with the new website and stuff, we're going to put that public, so everyone can see it. So you're going to have goals attached to the budget. But then as we go into the next year, you're going to revisit, I'm going to try to revisit these goals within the budget. I'm going to put something like this in the budget and then
Great.
A, a new goal. So as, as we go along here, you can go back and say, oh, what did I accomplish this? What was this budget year, what was this year like? And you'll go back to that budget and you'll see the goals and what's been completed. So it, when it's attached to a budget, you can refer back to also.
So I would like to recommend that at least minimally each quarter, we revisit these goals. And, uh, there's, there's no reason that if something very, very important comes before us, that we can't add it to the goals list during the interim period. But I think at least a quarterly reexamination of what we expect to accomplish is really important.
Sounds good.
Anybody else? Any comments? And I'm happy, I'm happy to discuss these with anybody, uh, you know, at any time, obviously. So we can, we can keep the conversation alive.
Would it be helpful to put timelines or thoughts about timelines in any of the goals? I mean, I know, having a person that works with grants and timelines, you know, oftentimes when you use a smart goal format, um, you have timelines attached to them in your stack to them, they can be revised or changed. But to, to say like, what are the goals, like, when would we like to see these goals completed by?
So that's, that's when you may want to have, and I'll look at other budgets, because a lot of places do, do goals in their budgets. But a lot, with a lot of places, I think, what they do is they have like these overarching ideas, vision for the city. You know, these three things, which is kind, you guys kind of have that here, right? You have these overarching ideas. And then you have, you know, um, functionally or operationally, how, what do we actually want to accomplish? Yeah, obviously, I mean, you don't want something that's going to take, I mean, at, at the, you may want something that's going to take 10 years also. I mean, it's a good, it's good to have all types of goals, right? But yeah, we can certainly, I can look at different ways to organize them. I like the idea of having just an overall vision for the city. And those should stay for a long time and then, um, having a subset. So I, I'll, I'll think about how to structure that. That's a good point.
You could almost add a third column with some projects that are in process that might have a defined completion date.
Sure. Yep, absolutely, yeah. So that's something also that, uh, you know, Morgan, while she's working at home, she's going to dive into stuff like this, which is, you know, there, there's all types of cool stuff you can do with the budget. So, um, we're, we're going, we're going our feet wet with this, so those are good ideas. Thank you. But yeah, if you guys think of anything else, feel free to email me, absolutely, you know. Uh, we'll, we'll be having budget meetings going forward.
Okay, anything else? Moving forward, hazard pay to essential employees.
So the police department came to me, um, with the idea of hazard pay and they pointed at different municipalities throughout the country in light of the COVID pandemic that, um, are giving hazard pay to police officers and other employees. Um, so I sat down with the union and we came to an agreement of $3 per hour while they're in the field, not to go into overtime rates. And so this is on the table today, because I, I want your take on hazard pay to other employees such as public works. Cause I got the suggestion that other employees should get it as well. So I, you know, if I want, if, if we're going to move forward, and this is just for the duration of the executive order, because, you know, we're having essential employees do things that, that, that the CDC is not recommending you do, like social interactions when they have to go arrest somebody, et cetera. Um, so, you know, I, the police is, is one thing, but I, I just wanted to get your feel, everyone's feel on, um, possible hazard pay to other employees. Um, and I just don't want, I, I, but I don't want is the police, you know, we do something for the police and that upsets somebody on the other end. So, you know, that's why it's on the table right now and I just want to, you know, get this set and sewn behind us, so we can move forward onto bigger and better things.
My personal opinion is the police has a different job than anybody else in the city. And I understand the public works, um, maybe out in the public, how much are they really doing right now?
Jim, do, Jim, are you here? I get, there, I, oh, go ahead, Jim.
Um, it's, I'm the only one that's working right now. We had an emergency sewer day, a week ago Monday, and I took care of it myself and I contracted that out. My guys have not been to work for a week now. And Daniel and I did talk about this and I didn't think it was necessary for us. And I thanked him for bringing it to my attention and asking. But, um, from what you guys have already done for the, the guys that work for me is above and beyond. So I, I, I know they're not, we, they're not even thinking about hazard pay. They're just thankful that they're getting a paycheck every week, although we have an emergency.
I sort of agree with that, so.
That's great to hear.
It is good to hear.
Chief, are you there? Do you want to add anything from the police's perspective on this?
No, not unless anybody has any questions. I, I, I certainly appreciate the, uh, the thought you gave them. They have had a couple of instances, um, and, and as time goes on, it becoming more and more frequent, um, that they've had to deal with people that were either, tested positive for the illness or are presumptive. So, um, we're doing the best we can to keep everybody safe with the personal protective equipment. And I've come up with a number of protocols as I get information from the state, uh, emergency operations center and CDC. I implement those, we've made, uh, we've taken steps at the office in case somebody is, um, directly, directly contacts somebody with COVID-19. There's, uh, maybe if there's a, uh, body fluids that fall upon a police officer or their person. So like I say, we're, we're doing the best we can to keep everybody safe and, and try to protect ourselves and, uh, protect our families. Thank you, Daniel.
Great.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief. Does anyone else have any other comments?
I would just say, stay flexible. So if something does come up and some of our other workers are put in situations that you would deem hazardous, then, you know, make your best call. But if there's nothing happening right now, there's no reason to implement it.
That's a good, that's a good point. Yeah, it could be a discretion and everything. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Hopefully, it's a limited period of time and it's not going to break the budget, so.
No, and it's not, it's not. And that's why, you know, I, I'd rather just get it on the table and let's, let's be, but, let's be done with it, you know? I mean, let's move on to different things here.
Yep, good.
All right. Great, it sounds like we have a plan. All right, city managers report.
All right, let me pull up. Um, so you, you got, you guys received my financial statement, uh, my income statement. You guys have any, any questions on that before I dive into anything else? There's, uh, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, some stuff is above, like, um, where Joan and Machaboe and, and Melissa, where we had to pay out for, for us, for vacation times and stuff like that. But when you average them all together, it's, it's kind of right on track. I mean, ideally, um, our, our salary line items should be around eight, 78%. All the other line items should be around 75%. So if you look at the bottom lines of each of our departments, we're not in bad shape. And also, um, some overtime lines are high, like police, public works are pretty high, but we're not doing any overtime now. So, um, you can, we can expect to stay within budget, if not under budget on, on these items. So, uh, does anyone have any questions regarding this? Okay. What was next on there? Okay, so the big thing, the big thing here, uh, is cash flow. And I sent you guys a cash flow analysis that I put together and I'll pu, I'll pull up a new variation of it that kind of deals with what we have going on today. So I put together, so this is the cash flow analysis that I put together. I analyzed every vendor, the cities paid in the past 12 months, and I took averages on a lot of them. And I made assumptions based on those averages, because I, at first I was going to Jim Laro and, and our other department heads and saying, do you still use this vendor, this, and other? And it, it just made more sense to just average them all, all out at this point in time. I can add to my cash flow analysis and it automatically updates my chart here. So if we have an, uh, an additional cost that occurs, I can plug it in here, um, and it'll automatically hit my cash flow. So this is just the beginning. I'm going to continue to add to it. I'm going to train Abby in the cash flow analysis. And hopefully this is something we can keep going beyond the pandemic that we're facing.
It looks like a lot of fun, Daniel.
Oh, it's, it's, I love it.
I love spreadsheets, so this is, I, I think it's amazing.
This is my Christmas morning. And then, so this is payroll, um, I made an assumption on payroll. Um, this was our last net check that we issued, so I just, I multiplied that out. This can, so this can change. We can drill down on costs, we could drill down on payroll. Our cash receipts, so I looked at accounts payable, payroll and cash receipts. I'm not looking at the line items, I'm looking at the cash flows in and out. So these are all our different types of cash receipts and that, uh, the cash receipts are from last year. So these cat, all these, and I, I kind of put this in the email, these cash receipts are all from last year. So these numbers are not going to be the same either, but again, it gives us a good baseline and gives us a good overview. So from that, I put together this scenario for you guys today. The smoke testing, the camera and the flow meter that Dexter was talking about, that is a loan, but it's really a grant. Basically, we put the money upfront, the state reimburses us and they forgive the loan. It's, and they may, they call it all these things and make it, it's really confusing. But anyway, so we need to make that purchase, uh, this summer to do all that testing that we committed ourselves to just doing. And so that's $51,000. Um, I, I'm assuming that we're going to have 600, that, that our, uh, property tax payments and sewer payments in the month of April and May are going to be half. And that, that brings us less $603,000. I'm assuming that the Homestead filings got pushed, so I'm assuming, um, that tax bills won't go out for a month. The Homestead filings got pushed till, when, when is it, Morgan? They got pushed till, uh, July, July 15th.
Yeah, it's matching the federal filing date, July 15th.
When you used to have to, uh, submit it, um, April 15th. So that's going to affect, we may not be able to submit, we may not be able to send out our tax bills on time, or we may have to send out corrected tax bills. And in the event, I, I forecasted for a delay, uh, of one month of 1.2 million, because our first tax bills that we send out, that's the biggest revenue we collect. That's the biggest cash receipts we, we collect all year. Even, a lot of people pay all four quarters at once. So I'm assuming that that gets pushed one month. And then my last assumption is the hazard pay, which I can now, this is with some hazard pay to other employees, because I made an assumption that maybe other employees would get some hazard pay. So I could take that up. But you could see that, uh, the hazard pay is really, that's why I wanted to get past that, because it's really in the scheme of things, not material. And we got bigger fish to fry. So all that being said, you could see the red ink here, that's from these, um, that's the difference between what I sent you guys and what, these assumptions I made. And the beginning cash balance, the cash balance, most important here, you could see from these assumptions, we go under in September by $4,500. So I can infuse, you know, I could put in, um, um, you know, a hundred thousand dollar loan right here. And it'll make everything beautiful. It'll make us go, go back up. However, um, I'm not sure, right, you know, I, I talked to Councilman Austin about this. We don't know what the market's gonna, you know, right now, everything's crazy. Um, people are paying their tax bills. I looked at the month of March, and people are paying, people are paying, and I'm monitoring that. So it may not, it may look better than this, if anything, um, our revenues here. And if we can get over this hurdle right here, the hurdle of paying the school seven hundred eighty-one thousand dollars in June, um, and then maybe deal with taking out a short-term note somewhere over here, because I think right now, we're focused all on this. We're focused on these, you know, the immediate, but down the line, um, you know, we may have cash shortages also. So the last thing, I, I, first, the last thing I wanna do is take out money. Um, but you know, you have to do what you gotta do to get, to get through until you get your uh, cash uh, receipts. Um, but the, you know, I don't wanna take out money and then have to come back to the bank and take out money again. So I've talked to the school today, the school finance director, and hopefully we can work out something where I can, where we can pay this where we, you know, this makes me a little nervous that it should, that I'm showing here that we'll have ten thousand dollars in the bank after we make this payment. That's, that's a little too close to com, for comfort. So maybe I'm gonna work with the school hopefully, so I don't have to take out money here. And then I can save that for over here, or maybe over here. I don't know what the future's gonna hold. So that's where I'm at right now. Um, this gives us a good understanding.
And Daniel, if I, if I may, we're, we're also certain to see some kind of directive from the legislature. We are obviously not the only municipality having this sort of issue. And uh, from conversations that I was party to last week, uh, we'll probably see direction regarding that within the next ten days. So uh, you know, we, we may not have to be in a position to borrow money.
I, I think you're right. I mean, we're all in the same boat, and I'm sure the legislature is gonna try and work with us. I, I think this analysis is fabulous, though. I mean, it shows you know, where we're at, and if we need to revise it, you know, monthly or whatever, we can, but it's a great starting point.
Yeah, that's, you know, and that's the goal here. Like, I can make a cash flow, but what is it worth if, if I can't manipulate it? So I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make a template here. Um, and this is what I love to do. I like to make stuff for, for um, people like Abby, people like Morgan, that they can go and use these tools that I make. So um, it's, it, it's not, th, this isn't gonna be beneficial for just now. It's gonna help this, this city in the future. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing a lot of this stuff going forward.
Daniel, I have one question for you, and I should know the answer probably, but um, in that cash flow spreadsheet under debt payments?
Yep.
Uh, in October, the hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
That's a couple payments.
What's that for?
I think one of them, one of them is definitely the police department.
Oh, that, well.
And that's like, yeah, that's like ninety thousand. I think, I think, I think there's a bunch of them. I can, I can, I can break it down. One of them is definitely
Curious. I mean, I, I, cause I couldn't, I couldn't in my own mind figure out what it was.
One of them is definitely the police department. That's about a hundred seventeen thousand, cause you got ninety-something for the principal, and then and then you got, you got like fifteen to twenty for interest.
Yeah, I thought that was two payments a year, but maybe it's one. I don't know.
One. And that's, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, like how, you know, some months, if you look at this bottom line here, this is our total cash payments. Some months, oop, oopsie. Sorry. Some months, it's, we have an easy month, like next month, thankfully, one hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. But some months, I mean, we're spending a million, and, and mainly it's because of the school. But um, you know, sometimes it's not, you know, four hundred thou, it jumps around, and, and having a clear picture is incredibly important. I don't know how you make decisions without something like this. So.
Has to be the fire truck and the
Yeah.
It might be the fire, you might be right. I could, I could, I have, I could break it down for you. I have it.
It's not a big deal. I mean, I just, you know, I was kinda curious, so.
Hold on, now you got
I'm not, I'm not gonna sleep tonight, Daniel, until you tell me what it is.
Just give me two seconds. I have it, it's in here. I have, I have it mapped out.
The mayor has to get to his parade.
It's all right, I've got time. Um, your screen's in my way here. Uh, so here you go.
Um, there it is, yeah.
US Bank, both fire department bonds. So, oh yeah, so here it is. So in October, we got, we got both fire department bonds and the police department.
Okay, there you go.
So that'll do it. So yeah, here's all our, here's all our debt here. So that's another thing. So the, it's, this is my, my cash receipts are just from last year. My personnel is current, well, what we're currently paying employees. So these numbers down here may not be the most accurate, but my, my costs, as you can see, I'm mapping out the bonds in real time and um, and other costs, and, and it, so my costs are pretty accurate, even though a lot of them are averages. You can see a lot of them are the same across the board. I feel fairly comfortable, though, and as, as we go here, it's only gonna get more robust.
Great.
Thank you. That's real, that's good work.
Yeah. No problem. Now I can sleep at night.
Yes. And actually, I'm sleeping a little better, too. So thank you, Daniel. All right, moving forward, COVID-19 update.
Yeah, so I'll just be quick on this. We got the bang and clang parade going on. Um, the chief talked about, he's got a whole hazmat protocol going on in his police station if someone gets exposed. Um, that's really the only updates I kinda have. I put out um, I put out like a letter today, just instructing people that, how to pay bills and stuff like that. Um, we're still having our meetings with the region, the regional COVID um, group from other towns. Um, and, and I'm applying, I'm trying to find funding, any funding that's out there. And there's, I don't know if you guys heard of the PPP program, Payment Protection Program. I wish that was applied to municipalities, cause we'd be a shoe-in for, for a loan forgiveness. But it only applies to small businesses, I guess. So I'm, I'm, I'm out there, I, I'm applying and looking for anything I can find. Um, financial assistance from FEMA. And that's, uh, uh, chief, they, they, chief got PPE. Chief, how are you on PPE? You wanna speak to that?
We're good, Dan. Uh, right now, we've got um, we need some stuff. I mean, we're, we're always trying to be proactive and getting the onesies and twosies as much as we can. Because uh, as you know, there is a shortage of it in the stores. But uh, either through the state or through our own purchase process, we've been doing pretty well.
Any questions, anyone? All right.
Great. Budget schedule.
Um, so next council meeting, I'd like to have a workshop for the budget, and then every council meeting subsequent a workshop until we pass a budget. So that's kinda all I wanna say to that. And I'll be working on the presentation for next week, or for next council meeting. I think at the next council meeting, I'll, I'll dive into personnel and revenues as far as the budget is concerned, and we'll go from there.
Great. Good time, good time to do it. Good idea.
Yeah, I, uh, just to speak to the budget a little more, I, I've had meetings with all the department heads, and I, I kinda, I have a budget put together already, but that I, I like to, you know, put things like the goals and those types of things together. So we're, we're, it's, we're, we're still working on it. And um, yes, it'll be a good budget, hopefully. And
All righty. Website update.
Um, so it should go live tomorrow. There's been some, that the whole domain thing has been um, a nightmare. The domain has since we went to the cloud, we've had problems emailing certain organizations, and our IT guy couldn't get into the domain to change, to make his change. So hopefully um, now when this new vendor has the domain, that won't be a problem. But even transferring the domain from our current website provider to the new provider has been um, because it has been a task, cause emails are a task. We can't just start over with a new domain. So um, the transfer has been initiated, and it says it's gonna happen tomorrow. So our, our new website might be live tomorrow, and I emailed you guys for um, I emailed you guys for some stuff uh, for the website. I don't know where am I? And this is, uh, Elder Woman Brooks emailed me back information. This is what I wanna do with our, this is our mock new website. And I have a page set up for each of you guys. And this is the type of thing I wanna put on there. So um, Tara gave me a bio.
Very impressive, Tara.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Look at how nice this is. So this is, this is what, this is what I'm asking those questions for. If you guys wanna give me something, that would be fantastic. Otherwise, Tara Brooks is gonna outshine all of you.
Can you just copy Tara's to everybody?
But look at how nice this is. And we're gonna have a thing for goals. Um, it's gonna be a nice website, so um, and also
I should be able to spend the whole day doing mine.
Yeah, and I got a, I got a spot down here for your social media and all those things. So if you have any suggestions, please let me know. But I think this is a, I like this idea.
That's great.
Yep.
So please, send me, send me answers to those questions, please.
Excellent. Anything else? My report will be short and sweet. I would, I'm uh, very enthusiastic, very enthused by the donations that the Boys and Girls Club has received for the Meals for All program. All totaled, we have received over thirty-one thousand dollars, which we know will take us through the middle of May through the current executive order. And we're providing about two hundred and eighty meals a day.
That's fabulous.
Yeah, sixty-five percent of those are, are uh, under eighteen. And the remaining thirty-five percent are seniors, who are either afraid or can't get out of their homes. Um, so that program is going on uh, very well. The Clang and Bang is going really well, and I, I, you're all the first to hear that uh, the Ferrisburg Fire Department will be joining us tomorrow night, as well as Virginia's Fire Department. There will be lots of police trucks. Um, it's great to be out there at night and see everyone smile. And we don't see a lot of those, so I'm excited to, to be a part of that. It's been a lot of fun, and I've enjoyed every moment. Um, and I, I just wanna put a word out to South Water Street that after last night's video, it's clear that South Maple Street is rehearsing. So uh, you know, you might wanna practice a little bit. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. Does anyone have any comments to make?
Please wear your seat belts at the Clang and Bang.
And please wear your seat belts and stay in the vehicle. All right, if there's nothing else.
I shall make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Great.
Stay safe, everybody.
All right.
Yep, you too.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.